Seventeenth, twenty nineteen. All to order. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain for indication, please.
I want to follow and come to you.
Bringing you this evening, thanks for our time to come together, Lord. We ask you to be with us while we discuss the leadership and things of our little small community here. Lord, be with all of each of us, and we take come together in one accord. We ask your guidance and direction tonight. Amen.
Rule call.
President.
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 Mayor Mike Gonzalez, President. Citizen participation. Ms. Mignolet's daughter.
Ms. Alfonso, water, do you want me to talk about now or?
Yes, what I would like to do is if there's any citizen participation regarding item number seven, if you want to speak now, and when we get to that item, I'll let you speak briefly. That way, we can do the business up here that we need to do.
Okay, I'll just address my concerns then.
Yeah.
Why the twenty-five percent when San Antonio was only being increased twenty percent? And if you all approve the increase when our bill gets put in, is the water rate going to go down for us? Because I know you said it was going to be higher for the new residents in the new house.
No, no, but it's going to be one rate across the board. Yes, we're hoping that we'd be able to lower the rate. But the way it is, the rate, the council's not voting on a rate tonight. They're discussing SARS rate increase to us for the wholesale market. SARS is proposing to go up on the wholesale customers, which we are one of their largest, by twenty-five percent. But for their residents, for the San Antonio residents, they're only going up nine percent, a little over nine percent. It's not, it's not equitable, which is why the council is looking at that.
I know their water rates are a lot lower than ours. I talked to some friends, and you know, I know, plus I went online and I checked. We pay a net of a lot more for the water here, which doesn't make sense. How much more do we pay for the water dams? Like, what is the interest that the city gets? If we're being charged, like, when we first got SARS, it was seventeen dollars, twenty-four dollars, something like that. And now we're already paying one oh sixty-four dollars.
It consistently gone up on us every year. And this, this particular, around twenty-five percent, that's on the heels of them going up on us in twenty sixteen by twenty-seven percent. So this is not new.
And the year after that, it was eight percent as well, Cody.
It was, it was twenty, yeah, between twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And then the year after was what?
That's what I mean, the year afterwards, it was another eight percent. And then, so this one is twenty-five, so we're looking at over fifty percent increase in the past year.
But my question is, how much more are the citizens of Elmandore paying to the city of Elmandore above what SARS is asking of the city?
Well, see, we run it very, a very lean margin. You know, we don't, we don't, because it's not only, it's not only the cost of the waterfront SARS, but it's the cost of maintaining our lines as well. Because once it hits the take points on Richter Road, then all the lines and everything are our responsibility. We have to maintain them, we have to, we test the water. We have to do all that. So our, our margin, like, at the end of the year is something like, you know, like last year, I think it was around one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, you know, that's, that's money that we can use or that we use for, you know, any unexpected things. Because, you know, if something major happens, you know, it costs more money, we have to go back to councils to appropriate more money. We need, we need that source, that, that money there to be able to, to go through. But the water department is actually run very, very lean. And there's not a whole lot of labor for that. And as we get into the item, you know, I, when we get to the item, I've got a brief statement of how this all came to be. But my, my hope, my end hope for councils, I will be able to absorb some of this. We may not be able to absorb all of it from SARS. But I hope that we'd be able to absorb some of it, because I don't know, I don't feel that it's fair for the citizens to have to bear the brunt of, of this increase from our water.
Well, if you want us to pay the CEO's bonus that he got, twenty-yes, a fifty thousand dollar one.
Esther. Ms. Esther.
I wrote something down, and basically, my, my address is not so much to the city council or to the city of Elmandore. But my, my address is to the San Antonio water system, and also specifically to the San Antonio City Council. I say to them, they have vowed to serve their community. And first, I wish to ask them, how could you so blatantly give approval to this increase? I wonder how your constituents would feel if they knew about this, or if they were happy to go through this. This is totally uncaring of the San Antonio City Council, I would say, and also of the San Antonio water system. Totally uncaring, and it's greedy on their part. I dare say that it is even immoral, but that is ongoing. How do they justify an increase in rate from nine percent to twenty-five percent? That is totally unacceptable. And I also wish to ask the council of San Antonio, is it truly fair to the citizens of Elmandore that this increase is due to the fact that they are non-voters of San Antonio? What kind of government is that, is what I say? This, this government here in Elmandore has been working diligently for their citizens, for the citizens of Elmandore. And they always have their best interests at heart. And so I say, both to the San Antonio water system and to the San Antonio City Council, I say, please, think about it and do the right thing sometimes.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, I got a problem. I can't understand or whatever. I need some kind of answers. Other day, I drove out of my road, got on the highway that I go on, three twenty-seven. Patrol car was stopped there, the stop sign like he's supposed to. I passed him, I waved at him, I turned down a little dirt road going by the clay factory, come back on the road, and head back to San Antonio. I kept looking through my rearview mirror. The cop came the same direction, the same as me. By the time I was up there by the park, I had seen them pull on the highway behind me. I got on the road, then I passed the oil company up there. I looked in my mirror, and I was a patrol car. I went on down, I got as far as the Reagan's Road. I looked in the mirror, well, I passed the Reagan's Road, got on County, County Road, looked in the mirror, the patrol car came down there and turned around and came back to Elmandore. Now, my question is, what was he bothering me for? Did he think I was going to rob somebody? Did he think I was some kind of crook or whatever? Was he working with that little badge telling him to chase somebody? Well, I tell him something about that badge. I carry that badge and I side them before most of them was born. I respect the law, but the law has got to be so-so with the people too. So that is what I'm saying. That little badge, don't make anybody dead god. You got to be in places, for that badge is just a target. I've been there, bunch of those people there. You better be smart, you better pay attention, and you better be able to protect a badge. Take, make sure you write with your head. And always remember, expect the unexpected. It's out there.
Yes, sir.
It's waiting for that badge, and that's it.
Chief, do you have anything on that?
Good afternoon, guys. It's good to see all of you. Cody, I, I found out a little bit about what Steve mentioned. What's the deal on the water wells? How are we doing on that? When are we going to get those water wells in more than that?
They're, they're-
How far is that away?
We're looking at the end of twenty twenty for it to be online.
That twenty-five percent, how much damage would it do from now to a year from now?
Well, it's going to be over, probably over a hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand dollars.
The reason is that I'm one of them that pay almost nearly four from five hundred to seven hundred a month. And I can't bring it down on my customers, for the reason is that I have to raise the rent. When you raise the rent, that's twenty-five more of these parts that I have to deal with. Then the taxes have gone up, because of the well end of the well, because of the oil. It went up, and the last four years, that gone up to three thousand dollars a year. I guess my question is, I would imagine if they're going to raise us twenty-five, you're going to have to raise up twenty-five percent. I mean, you know, from me, am I correct?
And that's, you know, that's something that council should consider if it, if indeed San Antonio does vote to approve this. I'm hopeful, you know, that if they do, I'm hopeful that we can put pen and paper and be able to absorb some of that, some of that, some of that increase. We may, we may not be able to absorb at all. So there may be a portion that has to be, has to be-
Last month, I used twenty-eight thousand gallons of water. That's what I used last month, like, including my household. And I figured out, have you ever figured out how much you were paying by the gallon?
Yeah, I don't have a figure in front of me, but yes.
Yes, I, I figured it out. It's pretty expensive, but twenty-five percent, you're almost looking about eighty cents a gallon.
Well, you have to remember too, you have to remember too, that our, our water went up back in twenty sixteen significantly for basically this exact same reason. And SARS went up on us twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight percent. And by them doing that, that's what prompted council to start looking at, okay, what can we do to have our own production facilities? That started the whole ballgame with getting our own wells, our own production facility, our own elevated storage and all that. And we're getting close, we're definitely getting closer. Our three wells have come in very good, but we're still a year away from, from it going online.
I just don't, I, I don't realize that House SARS can give San Antonio nine percent and we give twenty-five, okay? I, I don't understand that, for the reason is, I think San Antonio has a lot more uses of water than we do. We're not using that much water for them to raise those twenty-five. I can understand the bigger companies that come in here, they're using a lot of water, they're going to keep on using a lot of water, but we don't have to pay for them or anybody else. So I hope the council, when you make your decision, you make it, you know, we will, we will. Because it's going to break me, I know that. My passive income is, it was eighty percent, now it's going to be fifty percent. I'm not going to live on my passive income with my retirement fund.
We'll, we'll stand for-
Appreciate your time, listen to me, you know, that's one of my concerns right there. I'm busy.
Yes, then brought up about the well project. When are we going to get a status report? Did you get water, did you get dry holes? What's the issue with it?
I'll let Gary talk on that real quick.
Well, I think you ought to be writing something to pass out to the people, the taxpayers, the citizens of Elmandore.
I'll let Gary talk on that when we get to item number seven. Yeah, he'll answer all of it. All right, moving on to mayor and city council comments. I have none of this coming in. No comment.
I'll hold back until we get to item seven, thank you.
There is something I want to say. And I feel for each and everyone that's sitting here that has to pay that. I don't know if I'm incorrect in saying this or not, but my bill last month, I paid three hundred and five dollars. Do I water? Yes, but still, that is, that's an extensive bill. I wish, I wish there was a way I could say that, that Elmandore could make this go away, but we can't. The city of El, I mean, the city of San Antonio has us over a barrel. This is our only water source that we have. If we say, you know what, no, we're not, what's going to happen? What if we don't? So we, we can't turn off the water. All we can do is make our voice heard and let them know what's going on for y'all. And hope for the best. No matter what, they still have us over that barrel. We're stuck. They did put us on a four-year contract, am I, am I correct? Was it a four-year? Three years, you check. We were on this contract. In that contract, we basically didn't have a say. They said they're going to increase every time. And the first one was that almost twenty-eight percent?
Well, it wasn't, wasn't, it wasn't presented to us when we signed the contract. Once we signed the contract-
Boom, here it came.
Then they hit us with rate increase.
Then they hit us the second year in a row. Then they got us, this last one was how much?
But, well, it's, it's gone from-
It was twenty-seven, then it went up to two hundred.
It was almost twenty-eight, and then I think it was eight point something?
Then eight point nine percent.
Eight point nine, and then this third one?
Five point oh nine.
Five point zero nine. Now they're going to hit us on a fourth one in a row, four years in a row. This one's at twenty-five percent. I don't think none of us up here would ever pass that. We don't want to pass that. We will do our, our, we will do everything we can to absorb what we can. Will we be able to absorb it all? I step in issues too. Probably not, more than likely not. As sad as it is, part of that is going to go to the consumer. I don't like it one bit. I don't, I don't like the, the situation that they have us in. This is what kicked us off to do this water well system, so that we can get away from that. They know that we're probably the largest wholesale pair that they have. And the only one that has SARS by themselves. We don't have another water source we can go to. East Central Water or, or wherever, we only have them. They know it. It's sad to, to hear this, but we're going to do, we're going to do what we can up here for y'all. And we'll, we'll take it as, as, as they hand it to us, if you will.
Thanks, Your Honor.
I mean, I don't like it one bit, I know y'all don't. I, I feel for y'all, because we got to pay it too. I got to pay it too. Everyone up here's got to pay it too, along with y'all. It's not right, I don't agree to it, but we'll, we'll, we'll work it out the best way we can.
Because Elmandore, the only city they went up on, is East Central doesn't have any wells. They're using SARS water.
East Central has a couple of wells.
No, they, they have, they actually have quite a few wells. And they also purchase water from another entity, the Canyon Regional. And SARS is their third, their third-
Their third marshal.
Or marshal.
It used to be that home was silver stuff.
All right, moving on to, yes, go ahead.
I wanted to say something. Mr. Reynolds, do you remember the date it was when this patrolman followed you around? The date of the month, Saturday, or something? The chief can look it up. If that's trouble, you're called.
Mr. Reynolds.
What?
Do you remember what day it was that this, that the incident happened with you?
What?
Do you know what day it was that the incident happened with you, with the officer?
Monday, morning, about eight thirty, when I was running the town.
Monday morning.
This past Monday?
This past Monday, yeah.
Okay, thank you. This gentleman here, sir, sir?
Mr. Lloyd.
Mr. Lloyd.
Are you asking for someone to give you a status report on the wells? Our office, that's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Did you want something written, right, that you can read?
We can put that on the website, can't we?
Okay.
Oh, look at her.
All right, moving on to, yes. General business consent agenda, items one through five, we can make a motion to pass at one time. Adoption and approval of the city council minutes from September nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Approval of the previous month's bill paid and financial reports. Reappoint expiring term members of the Citizens' Complete Review Board, the CCRB, for another year. All current members are de-serious of continuing their role on the board, including Tommy Hicks, Laura Wright Wallace, Mignolet's daughter, Linda Peña Ortiz, Tony Tridino, Roxanne De Leon, and Eric De Leon. Number four, appoint members of the expiring team. Term places two and four of the Fanning and Zorni Commission Board for a two-year term, place two Tommy Hicks, place four Peggy Stevens. Item number five, approve placement of a street light at the intersection of FM three twenty-seven and South Fort Avenue on pole number two five eight seven nine nine. Is there a motion for one through five?
I, uh, moved it off. It'll be accepted, it's postponed, one, two, five.
Okay, second?
I second that.
Sorry, second, solid favor. All five. General business individual consideration, item number six, introduction of two Elmandore Police Department chaplains, James R., am I going to pronounce this right, let me know. Sternman?
Yeah.
And Cheryl Kirk.
In December, five years ago, I became the chaplain of Elmandore because of a line of duty death of our previous police chief, which is a very sad situation. I discovered and heard on the news that there was going to be thirty-five hundred homes being built here. And so I definitely saw the need to have additional chaplains. And so my wife, who is a chaplain also with the fire department, she was sort of recruited. And then also Jim, who's a chaplain as well, he was recruited. And Jim has even gone and done his advanced training in, where was it? Where did we go? Kansas. Wichita, Kansas, Wichita, Kansas. So he went up with me back in July, and Cheryl will be able to do that shortly, but she has recently retired from working on that. So I want to say that because of protocol and things that we've seen in the past, we have had in other departments have brought in chaplains, and we bought them the pillows, we bought them shirts, and they didn't even show up to get them. So we put basically a protocol that they have to show an interest, they have to show to facilities, to events, which they have. And so after six months in our protocol, that they are now allowed, because all they have is just their name and chaplain. So they will now be having this put, which will be representing a chaplain for the city of Elmandore. So I want to present to you Chaplain Cheryl and Chaplain Jim. And we're going to, they're not going to have them on Sunday. Sunday is going to be the dedication, the groundbreaking of the new fire station. And that is a monumental thing for this community. We are very happy that that's going to take place. I have dates as far as different times and also completions, but that is going to be very, very good. If you can't come out, please come out for that too. I'll be representing the fire department, which I'm with. And these two chaplains will be, of course, representing Elmandore, which they are with as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's on October twentieth, at one P M, one A P M.
Correct. It is October, Sunday, at one o'clock. And there's a big sign now. If you go to Texas Best, it's right between, you know, six before, one of that stuff. I didn't even know the sign was there, I took a picture.
Number seven, the best possible action regarding proposed twenty-five percent wholesale water rate increase from San Antonio Water Systems. Consider the impact, possible responses, and budgetary considerations. I'm going to start with Ms. Tracy.
All right, thank you. So I would appreciate the mayor reaching out to our media and our city to, to attend tonight. As mentioned before, we have been working diligently on constructing our own water production facility to have our own water source to supply to our citizens. SARS is aware of this. SARS also knows we are a low-income community. We currently purchase one hundred percent of our water source through them. And yet, they still want to hit us with an increase of this magnitude. I feel this is unjustified, and we are being taken advantage of. Our job as city council members are to advocate for our citizens and bring attention to what is affecting them. We work very hard to better the community, and when we get hit with spending that is out of our control, it does cause heavy setbacks on our continuing project, that progress. I'm just as upset as, as y'all are to hear this news. As a city councilwoman, like Mike had mentioned, we are going to work diligently on hopefully stalling. Maybe hopefully SARS will understand our concerns and increase the increase. But if not, we're going to work on hopefully not passing the entirety on to our citizens and do what we can to absorb what we can. We have been working for quite a while on our new water plant. I look forward to hearing an update. You know, and hopefully by the end of next year, we can be up there running again. We won't have to be affected by the circumstances anymore. Thank you all for coming today. I appreciate your attendance and voicing your concerns. Thank you. If you have any other questions for me, I'm glad to see you after meeting.
Mr. Doris?
Okay, well, what can we say? All I can say on my new councilman here, I will recommend try to negotiate with SAWs. And if we can, maybe we, the city here, can absorb the cost from Elmandore. Maybe from the Economic Development Committee, they have quite a bit of money, maybe we can absorb the cost there. I'm learning all this, I'm on the learning stage, so... But we do have money that maybe we can absorb and help our citizens. That's it.
Mr. Polo?
I have heard the question, why are they doing this to us from nine percent to twenty-five percent? And I have heard the pain that it causes, costing them, and all this, and I was thinking that maybe we should have started about a year or two early. Been with the home waters already, but we didn't. But it's going along fine, I think, and I'm glad that's happening. Going back to why are they doing it? I could come up with a lot of speculations, a lot of things. And one that I just wanna take advantage of the last year they're gonna be with us. Try to suck as much blood as we can. A bunch of their pockets.
Mr. Manuel?
First of all, I'd prefer everybody who did come and showed up here, us as the citizens of Elmandore, to represent you. And I do want everyone to understand, we feel the pain y'all feel, we feel the frustration y'all feel. I think I'm just really having a hard time trying to understand how SAWs can continue to attack the city of Elmandore and the citizens, you know? In the past three years, we've been hit for over a fifty percent increase in water itself. It's even harder when SAWs is not providing any reason or justification for it. You know, the citizens of Elmandore have a staff that do all the work for us when it comes to the water services. Thanks to Steven, he's qualified to handle anything that comes our way. And so with that being said, all they're doing is providing water, and yet they continue to hit us with increases after increases. And it is very frustrating and very disappointing to me as a citizen and as a council member. You know, they continue to hit everybody here, every citizen in the pocket, and, you know, the point was brought up that we have a community that is in low income for one, and for two, we've got citizens that are in fixed income. But yet, every year, SAWs seems to have their upper echelon getting these big bonuses year after year. It's just so hard to understand when it's not like we're hundreds of miles away, we're inside the, you know, Bird County itself. And SAWs has no one here to explain why, or even give us a reason. It's just frustrating, and, you know, we all are citizens, and we are all frustrated. And that's all I've gotta say.
Ms. Linda?
Okay. I will start out by saying that it was in October of 1996 that we started to purchase wholesale water from SAWs, which is a San Antonio water system. We were in need of better water and petitioned SAWs for both water. One number, our number one priority is the health and welfare of those we are providing the water to. We attended numerous meetings in hopes of obtaining good drinking water for the citizens and the members of the community that are within the certificate of convenience and necessity. I have to say that I'm thankful that we were granted our request and have been their customer for years. That being said, I also have to say that it was never our intention to charge our customers exuberant prices. We are a community of low to moderate income. At this rate, our customers will not be able to afford their water. As much as I am thankful to SAWs, I am sadly disappointed that we are getting the brunt of their rate hikes. I understand that it is raised yearly, but they are not being fair by charging San Antonio, their constituents, so much less. In my opinion, and that of others, this is price gouging. I know that they feel that we are at their mercy, but if SAWs is raising the price to all the customers, then we ask that they be fair across the board. Thank you.
I'm gonna add a little bit to what you were saying. I've been in this community for twenty years, I guess, here, in what they call the city of Elmandore boundaries now. Before my time here in these boundaries, where I was born and raised before, was considered Elmandore. Slowly, San Antonio has started to annex, take it. They're all the way to Rick the Road or somewhere there?
Yes.
And I don't know if y'all are familiar with, but Fort Tannis South the Road, what they used to call South in Texas, that's where I was born and raised. That used to be Elmandore. This is where we used to come to the post office and all that stuff. They've annexed a lot of the property heading this way. With that being said, we did annexations too. I don't know if that made them upset. I don't know what the situation is there. Them doing this twenty-five percent increase to us is no different than them annexing all this property that they did, and you drive that way, and they can't even maintain the sides of the freaking roads at all. The trees are shaped square because of vehicles that hit them, eighteen-wheelers that cut and shaped that way. They don't maintain none of that stuff that way. You drive part of the way down that way, you're gonna see it. Y'all know, all of y'all have been down that way. I feel we're getting the same treatment with this twenty-five percent increase. I don't see that it's right in any way. There's numerous families that are here in Elmandore that are fixed income. How are they gonna pay this? I mean, do they turn around and pay the water bill and forget their medication? Their food? We don't know their situation. But to be on a fixed income is tough. You only get that, and that's it. Nobody gets no more. Veterans is another one. We have a lot of veterans here, too. They're on fixed incomes, if they get it. I don't know. I don't feel right about this at all. I'm in support of whatever one of y'all are saying. All I can say is I'll sit here and do my best for each and every one of you. And I hope, I'm pretty sure that they're gonna support the same thing.
Is there any way that the city can file a petition?
We are actually looking, we are looking into that, and I did talk with Mike about it. Here a little bit, I'll let him speak, and that'll get answered. Okay?
I'd just say, being on that Capitol Improving Board, we're gonna be dealing with them forever. We can't get rid of them. Better figure out a way to get along with them. It's not gonna be easy.
Right.
It's just what we gotta have.
Yeah. I didn't finish, I didn't finish talking yet, but I was actually gonna say that. I don't understand why, yes, I know they're such a monster municipality compared to us. We're just a speck on the map. They're a lot bigger than us. But still, is that the way to build a relationship with municipalities? And do this? Year after year, not once, four times in a row? I think it's incorrect. I believe it is a hundred percent price gouging. Fully believe that. And it sounds like it's pretty much a monopoly-type thing as well. I don't know. It frustrates me a lot to see that we're all gonna have to go through this. I don't know, I just don't understand it. Why? I wish they would consider what everybody's saying here and give us the rate that they gave their people, you know? I mean, fair's fair. We just gotta make it that way.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, but isn't it true that we're gonna be mixing all y'all with theirs to get it to the right article levels?
That was the original, that's the discussion and the other discussions putting in the plan, that it'd be reverse hospice plan, break down the BS. If you're ready, I can...
Not yet, not yet.
That kind of covers all...
At some point, will we ever be in a position to sell back to them?
No, we won't.
No, no.
Oh, I wish that was possible. Yeah. That's, yes. That's...
Seventy-five percent. Seventy-five percent.
So when that time comes, just don't forget this.
Ms. Esther?
Yeah, well, basically, I'm hearing, like, well, like, for us, I mean, there's nothing we can do. We're under SAWs monopoly thing, like, but, I mean, is there, is there nothing that we can do? I mean, what about the Utilities Commission?
I would let Cody answer that.
Okay.
And I'm gonna turn it over to Mike, but I've got one just, one point just to kind of it.
The Utilities Commission, what about the media? I mean, what if we put it out there? Well, I don't know where he's from, but I mean...
Wilson Kelly?
Well, but I mean, the main media in San Antonio, where, you know, where they have most of their business.
Yeah.
KSET-12, all those people.
We did send out an invite to all of them.
The Express News is here.
Yeah, well, I mean, we need to put it out there more with some of the bigger stations, like, you know, KSET-12, KNS, all of those, and really put out the word so that they will, maybe they'll feel a little shade.
Yeah.
You know, they've got this monopoly going, and it's just not... So I, even, I was telling, I was talking, well, what if we get a whole bunch of people from Elmandore? We go to one of their meetings of SAWs and let them know, hey, we're not gonna roll over and die just because, we're gonna speak our mind and let you know, hey, if you're gonna do it, do it, but we're gonna let you know, please, then. We're not just gonna...
Where's our state represented?
I had actually thought about that, too, but I got actually thought about...
Start at the top and come down, or start at the bottom and go up.
Go straight for the next hit.
Mike, you know, I always think it's like a box. With that being said, is there a situation where we can actually sue SAWs for what they're doing?
So there is enough, no mayor, if you wanna get into this. I mean, we can certainly talk about it. There is, and talking about the problems with the Utilities Commission, there is a section of the Water Code, which I think allows for rate appeal against the wholesale water supply. They're not very common. In fact, I'm aware of two that have happened since PUC has had jurisdiction for private lawsuits. They don't happen very often. There, it's a two-tier lawsuit. Basically, the appeal, the first tier is you have to determine whether or not the rate increase was against the public interest. If you do that, then you have to go to the next tier to have a separate hearing. This one actually, so the first one was before ALJ, Administrative Law Judge, to the State Office of Administrative Hearing. After that, the second one, it actually go before PUC for them to the South Fort Commission. So the first part, so let's talk about that. That's, it's a pretty drawn-out process. There's several issues that you could try to prove. One, be a monopoly. There is actually a definition of monopoly in the code that could be determined if it was monopoly. Mayor and Cody and I have talked a little bit about that. One of the problems that Elmandore has with that is although we're in a situation where it's a hundred percent water, but we're not aware if there's anybody else. And so that's one of the criteria, it's the only water source. So we would, from what we know right now, we could look into it more. But this, that's, this is actually, if we wanted to get more detail, I'm gonna do that in a closed session, talk about that, so I'm just gonna give you an overview right now of the possibilities. But you have to prove, like I said, that it's against the public interest, and there's different ways to do that. One of the ways to prove is that the increase actually prohibits or makes it impossible for the city to provide water to its customers. And so that, that's as you can imagine, and I don't know how much experience Gary has to have, but as you can imagine, that becomes a very technical issue to figure out. And so we would have to get a copy of their rate, you know, because all this would be done through SOA, so there'd be discovery, there would be prefiled testimony, there could even be depositions, that would all have to be done, and we would have to get a copy of their rate mechanism, figure out how it was that they actually determined their rates, and move forward with that. I don't imagine we have any information regarding our last rate decreases, which are, you know, have been consistent, but if they change their rate mechanism, that's something that can be considered. There's a litany of issues. I think that the most recent one, and just by pure happenstance, I represented the city of Graham as the wholesale wafer producer, and the only one that's gone all the way to PUC that involved a situation like this. I do have some experience with that. But our list of issues is three pages long that are the different things that are proven. So we can go through that, I'm just gonna have the information from SAWs right now to answer that question. It would be a long process. Ours was much smaller than SAWs, obviously, and it went almost two years before we had our SOA hearing. So I would imagine this would probably be longer because of the amount of expert testimony and everything that you would have to be, and it would be extremely expensive, both with, you know, attorney time and also with the expert witnesses that we would have to hire to put that forward. So there is a possibility in the Water Code, but it's not an easy one. It's not one that's a may or may not.
Give me a second, Jesse.
Yeah.
Cody, I'm gonna let you finish with what Esther was talking about.
Oh, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea about going and talking to SAWs. Just based off of our previous history and what happened in late 2015 when it was announced that they were throwing up twenty-seven percent on us, but only seven percent on the residents of San Antonio. We had complained to many people at the time, including, there was even a resolution done at the county commissioners' court to, essentially, to encourage SAWs to include members from our area or other members from the outlined areas as wholesalers onto the SAWs board so that we would actually have a voice. But even though that resolution was passed by the commissioners' court, SAWs never acted on it. But to give you an idea, I had a telephone conversation with the controller of SAWs at the time, in 2015. And I was obviously upset that we were getting hit with such a large increase, twenty-seven percent. And at the time, I told him, well, you know, our only alternative is to go to the meet. And the controller told me, that's fine, because at the end of the day, the city council of San Antonio is the one voting on this, and they don't care what your citizens have to say, because they can't vote for them. So that's the mentality that I was, that I'm fighting. And I agree with your idea on the media. We did invite the Express News, thank you very much for coming. Wilson County News, thank you very much for coming. We did invite all the TV stations... And we did invite all the TV stations from KSAT to KENS to WAI, Univision, FOX. Unfortunately, they couldn't show up. But yeah, I think it's important that we get the word out there to as many people as we can and say, look, look what is happening to us. It's not very fair.
Jesse?
I've heard every one of you and I appreciate your thoughts and, and... And our reality without water, we cannot live.
Nope.
It's lack. So, they really got us under a barrel. And also, we can observe those 100,000. I know we can. We ain't got a choice, in our reality. I'm one person that don't like faith more than I have.
Please do.
Because I work very hard.
I think that's all of us.
But in our reality, we can't live without water, so... At the end, at the end of the say-so, that's, that's it.
We ain't got it. We'll do our best.
That's all we can do. And I appreciate all your, your comments and your thoughts. And I know that the, the people out there understand that too. Some of us might be able to afford a little bit, you know? So, there's people out there that think they won't. And I understand, I feel for them too, but, you know, that's part of life. And I, Cody, I, I just want you guys to know that you've been doing a good job and I really appreciate that myself and the council and the mayor, you know? All you guys that are here in the city have done a great job, you know? And I appreciate being invited and appreciate you hearing my comments. I am concerned and I know that you guys are doing the best you can. Thank you.
My head. But I'm checking, does the city have a breakdown of how many families have here? Not only the elderly, but retired? Because the majority of everybody here is retired. You have a man with no...
We have a little citizen group. I don't count those, no.
What about the citizens that are concerned by this water increase? You sending letters to the city that you can take to San Antonio? Because until when do you have, well, you have to have another meeting on the shirt? So, we can get the letters to you for that meeting, if you can take.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, they'll be voting on it in November. And, you know, maybe this is a good idea if we can try to get contention from Elmendorf to vote anything.
Yeah.
To see what we can, I mean...
Is it worth the try?
Worth the try? Whether, whether it will end up being a good one?
That might get the attention of, you know, one of the TV stations too. If you have more at that point, you might have.
Well, I think, I think that one of the things that kind of is frustrating as, as a council member was, we invited, so I, I'm grateful for everybody who was here, but the whole community was invited and, and, you know? Is everybody concerned and everybody upset? Yes. But there's strength, strength in numbers and you got a lot of deceits. And that's my heartache, because I'm a council member and I'm yet a citizen and, and I'm also a voice for everybody here. And it is really hard to see that everybody wants to complain, but, you know, the toughest talk, you know? You've got to walk the walk also. And I think that if more citizens were to get involved in, like you said, then maybe we would get more attention.
I know a lot of people say that they don't listen anyway. And, you know, to some degree, they're right. But at the same time, you know, I'm one of these that says, let's go down fighting.
You have to, you have to. All right, so they don't need no action or anything on number seven. All right. We're gonna move on to number eight. Oh, Gary, sorry.
I hear the good news, man.
Go ahead.
On the water project, we've been working on it for, seems like years now, and everything's coming together. We, there's three wells that have been drilled, cased, and seamed. We've done 36-hour pump tests on three, the three wells. The original plan or projection was 275 to 300 gallons a minute. They were all tested at around 600 gallons a minute. So, they're much stronger than what we had planned for, which is all good news. Water quality, we have field data on water quality. We, we should get lab tests back next week, but all the field data shows that it's pumpable water, right in the realm of where we thought it would be on water quality. So, quantity is much better, quality is as good as we thought it would be. We have, we're working through all the other plans on the water lines, elevated storage tank, ground tanks, pump station. Still talking about the plant. Do we wanna go reverse osmosis? Do we wanna go blending, which would be the SAWs route? Blending SAWs and water with, with the water that we produce here on site. So, those are all options, but we're, here in the next week or two, we're gonna make that decision. Once we have all the water quality data from the lab, we'll make that decision. We're packaging up all the water quality data and information that TCQ needs to approve these public water supply wells. So, all that will be packaged up as soon as we get the water quality. We'll submit that to TCQ, get our approval, they'll assign numbers to the wells, and we'll have established public water supply wells. Again, quality was where we thought it would be. Quantity is much better than what we needed. So, you have a lot of water for a well in the future. It, it is meeting pumpable water standard, standards, but it's right at the limit. We don't know if, over the term of pumping, we don't wanna be right at that limit. So, we wanna bring the water quality that is total, solid, solid, that, that is the constituent, that's right at the, the level. So, we wanna bring that down, so in through blending or reverse osmosis. So, still working on that. We're working through final easements with the property owners on the property. That's one of the last things we need, so we can go out and bid for the elevated tank, the grounds, ground tanks, and all the pipelines. There's been a lot happening in the last four or five months with Platte, we are working and working with the developer, the developer agreements. All that's coming together and we're looking forward. So, we'll have projects out in the year very, very soon as soon as we get easements set and we'll get plans approved through water development for the construction. As far as the main point, the wells are as good and much better on water quantity than what we, what they had to be to make it a lot of progress.
Mr. Stevens, do you have anything to add? No? All right.
No, all right. See, that's great news about the water quality, because, yeah, then you could cut San Antonio off.
Yep.
That, that was the one thing I know from sitting and reading that old 60-page. And that's what I came away with, that we were stuck with San Antonio, but it was... But you don't know if it stayed that good.
Well, over time with pumping, it may, we're right at the, so the limit's 1,000.
But the reverse osmosis could correct that.
Correct. Yes, yeah, we could always build plants to, to be able to do this.
There you are. That's our way out.
Yeah, and see, our, our original plan and the budget calls for reverse osmosis system. If we could save that money, that would have been nice, but particularly with this news, you know, Gary and Steve and I have been talking about, we need to stick to the original plan. Let's go to reverse osmosis. Let's give it the worst ways we possibly can.
Yep.
Once your project is completed, well, well, then we'll let the city have more, see, we'll...
But the project has to be done. Our, our schedule says the project has to be done by the end of 2020. Then we'll go with it.
Well, we're setting up a deal with the, with Elmendorf.
We'll be pumping into the system, into the whole system that is all of Elmendorf.
There's 29,000 feet of water line, office system.
Right.
It's in the back.
What hour of the morning are you here?
This is Wilcox. Wilcox.
All right. Here we move on to item number eight. Discussing possible action regarding subsidy funding for repair of homestead places and one roads. Bring them up to city code. This has been on our radar for a while.
On our radar for a while. We have gotten all the signatures. Everyone has executed the agreements to basically repay the city for fronting the money to bring those roads up to code through the existing turrets that's there. We have several projects in the works, including this one, West First Street paving project, the acquisition of the city park land and doing the park restroom. The EDC have recently met and they had agreed to put up the money for the acquiring the park land as well as to do the restroom. So, we're, we're working that out through them. But we need to fund this particular project. And what I'd like to do is to be able, in doing these projects, projects, is to not go into debt. So, one of the things that we had done, last year's budget continued with this year's budget, is we've been putting, setting aside an amount of money of $12,000 per month into a road infrastructure fund. And at this point, that particular fund has $157,000, $557, $535 in it. And what I'd recommend to councils is that we use that, use that infrastructure fund to, to have these roads corrected and then have the money reimbursed back into the turrets over time.
Yeah. That's perfect sense.
The total cost of, of the, the estimated cost of fixing the roads is $180,000. But by the time we actually get to having to front that money, that will have that, for our $12,000 per month, will have that in the account.
Yes.
Yes. So, I'd recommend...
Yeah, reimbursement's there. I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it weighs out, you know, it works out.
Is this run more going out from the contractor?
This will be through, it's actually, we've agreed to provide the money to the contractor. Roush Coleman will have the work done. They just didn't have the capital to do it. So, essentially, this is essentially a loan.
The contractor will be talking to this guy.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, definitely. All right, is there a motion for eight? Do we need to include what you just said?
I would just recommend a motion to allow us to use the, the monthly infrastructure fund to fund this particular project.
Okay. All right, is there a motion for eight?
I make a motion to direct the city to use the infrastructure fund to repair the homestead place at a point to bring them...
Second? Manual seconds, all in favor? All five. Item number nine, discussing possible action regarding ordinance 10-17-2019-1, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter 30, article six.
It is.
Section 30, dash 140, sewage disposal, regulating the construction of wastewater system, providing a severability clause, providing for the repeal of ordinance in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Tracy, I'm gonna let Gary start on this, but basically, we, you know, as we work into getting into the wastewater business, we need standards for, for construction of the wastewater facilities and distribution lines. These are the standards. This is just another step along the way of acquiring our wastewater hearing. You want to have detail on this?
So, that, that's basically, you're getting into a new, new sewer utility. Right now, you don't have any standards. Your, your only standard, point two, is SAWs standards. And there's some things that we wanna change in that. So, these documents do that. They'll be established by the city with this resolution, if approved. And basically, it just sets forth on lift stations, any of the collection systems, anything that has to go on in the sewer, we have a standard to go by, point two, and hold contractors and developers accountable to that standard. Basically, you're studying the standard to, that way, whenever someone comes in, wants to develop a plan, put their hand up this and say, this is how, this is what we want. Takes away some of those questions.
So, to simplify this.
System. Because this totally can be used for home size.
To simplify this, basically, just as the standard that we will have for anyone who would want to come in and... Right, yes.
Where the city would only maintain the collection system.
Absolutely, okay. All right, is there a motion for number nine?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 10-17-2019-1, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter 30, article six, section 30 to 140, sewage disposal, regulating construction of wastewater systems, providing a severability clause, providing for the repeal of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Hold a second, all in favor? All five.
Motion to adjourn.
Not yet.
Hold that.
I just want, I wanna thank the media that came out to record all this. Hopefully, something will come about this in the eyes of SAWs. But by no means will we just throw down. We're, we're, we'll do what we can, the best way we can for y'all. Thank y'all for everybody's opinions. I appreciate them. I value them a lot. And we'll, we'll work through this together with y'all. I thank y'all for coming out. Y'all have a great evening, and that's all y'all. All right, now motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Tracy, seconds, all in favor? All five.
Yeah, I would encourage council to hang around just for a few minutes in case the media asks you questions.
Yes, sure. 8:00, 8:00 PM.